Please call the roll.
Winters.
Here.
Lauren.
Here.
Dowling.
Here.
Swallow.
Here.
Bear.
Here.
Brooks.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Bowman.
Here.
Gang's all here. Item four, discussion in action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda and then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration in action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the special meeting June 15th, 2023. Item B, approval of claims in the amount of $274,736.93 and payroll expenses of $236,456.79. Item C, approval of the ASAP Energy Inc. expense and invoice for $35,154.81. And item D, approval of OGN E electric expenses of $54,609.15.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
I second.
Have a motion from Mr. Winters and a second from Ms. Beer to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call vote.
Winters.
Yes.
Bear.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Lauren.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Dowling.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Item six, reports. We don't have planning commission reports, do we? Okay. Hospital authority meeting, Mr. Bowman.
Other than the routine business, we had a Ms. Darlene talk about SQSS, which the hospital is integrating as we speak. It stands for Strategic Quality Support System. It basically ties all of the reports, all of the duties of the hospital, whether it's EPA or just everything in one system so they can all look it up. And that took up most of the meeting. Also, we had a medical examiner survey, which was really good, other than four minor administrative deficiency. And the surveyors gave the hospital high marks and Dr. Tuckers should be starting procedures now. Actually, the 17th, I think, was his first week. So, that's about it, other than the routine business.
Council, any questions for Mr. Bowman? All right. Next item is the library board meeting. Mr. Dowling.
It was a good library board meeting. The financial data, we were able to look back at what we have in the past year compared to this year. Juvenile checkouts are significantly up, along with movie ratings, which were up by double what they were last year. We also talked about our summer reading program and the pop-up book sale, which has been going very well. The library has also introduced new classes for the sale classes. I think they're very similar to the Tai Chi classes, kind of geared to a different audience. And we talked about that the library does have public accessible computers if you would need to apply for the water assistance program that we spoke about at the last meeting, but the meeting before that. Other than that, it looked like everything was going pretty swell for the library board meeting. We also talked about future programs and some grants we could apply to. That included a reading walkway and some things I would like to do in the future if we could get things going.
Does the council have any questions for Mr. Dowling? Thank you. Don't believe we have an arena authority report. Okay. Next item is tourism tax commission meeting. Ms. Beer.
We met June 21st. Our next meeting will be this Wednesday, the 19th, at 5:30. Larry Harmon presented the annual Neskatanga Golf Tournament and they were awarded $6,000 to help fund that. And other than that, we just did the routine business, discussed the FY24 budget and renewing their media package. And the media package helped showcase Alba and the Travel Guide, the Outdoor Guide, the Oklahoma Today Magazine, and Oklahoma Red Carpet. So, it kind of goes out through all of Oklahoma. So, just getting new pictures updated and moving on with that.
Any questions for Mrs. Beer? Okay, thank you. Also, there was no board of adjustments meeting, the outer regional airport commission meeting. We have several items, and we've had a couple meetings. We had a regular meeting and a special meeting. We've got several items that we'll talk about in this agenda, so I'll not say it all twice. We'll get to that in a minute. I will tell you that we did receive $75,000 in pandemic-related grants that we had applied for. We got the funds in June. And as of June 30, the loan from the general, or the loan from the airport fund to the general fund has been all paid back. Airport checking account is where it needs to be. All the due to forms from our previous audits are zeroed out. And so, all of that's done. It won't show up on any future audits after it shows it's completed here. Any questions regarding the airport meeting? Next item is the recreation, Parks and Recreation Board meeting. We need to update that in agenda language. Ms. Swallow.
On our May 17th meeting, we approved Kim Lee Horn as the consulting agent for the ARC Turf project, for the bid build project that totals $10,000. And they will do a bid development posting and evaluation. And then our July 12th meeting, those bids were in the outer review career for the first time. Well, they were started on the 14th. And they will be open August the 4th at 2:00 PM. We approved a recommended council, the TSET grant. All the buildings now have LED lighting there. And there is a survey for Hatfield Park online for youth and adults that they would like everyone to participate in and complete.
Any questions for Ms. Swallow?
Where is that survey accessible from?
You can do it online through the, through the city. Yeah. Go to the city.
It's on our website.
It's under Parks and Rec, isn't it?
Yeah. Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you. Next item is cemetery meeting. Steve, can you report on that?
I work here for the last one.
We don't have those numbers.
Oh, that's just quarter. That's right. Okay. And Mr. Winters, finance committee report.
So, our cash balances for City of Alba went up to 4.89 million. A big part of that deals with receiving a million in the pool donation, which actually shows the Alba Economic Development Fund having collected 205.31% of their anticipated revenues for the year. Again, a million of that is the pool donation fund. I believe that was the, was that the share money from their matching grant? So, we've received $345,844.82 in sales tax and the $35,172.26 in use tax. That's down 3.45% from June of 2022 and down 10.74% from May of 2023. We only collected 97.97% of anticipated budgeted sales tax revenue this past year. We billed out $386,66 in utilities, which is also a decrease of $43,916 from May of Utility billing was at 96.13% of budgeted revenues. The rest of the meeting, we spent a good amount of time dealing with CDs and going over those. We had seven that are going to mature this year, or this month, and then several that are going to mature next month. So, we're going to go out for bids on those. And then we also approved approximately, what was that, 1,125,000 or 50,000 in additional monies to be invested in CDs, a million of that being the pool donation fund that was part of that MOU that we approved last month or month before. So, we're going out for bids on that to get that invested. And that's my report. If you have any questions.
Council, any questions for Mr. Winters? All right. The mayor's report. I don't have a lot to report. I did attend the mayor's summer conference to the municipal league in Chickasha. Brought some information back. Steve's checking in some of it, see if it'll make a difference for us in some of the ways we operate, different vendors out there and things of that nature. Other than that, I'll conclude my report unless Steve gives his, unless anybody has any questions.
Are we going to start any of the other committee meetings?
Committee meetings, I think, you know, this is my take on committee meetings. If we're going to have committee meetings, they need to be productive. And if a committee meeting is, if the committee is going to meet and make the recommendation to city council, I think then we come back and share the highlights of that committee meeting, what the recommendation was, and then council acts. If we're going to rehash everything that takes place in a committee meeting, I don't want to waste everybody's time with a committee meeting if we're going to talk about everything again on Monday night. So, if I can get a commitment out of everybody to honor the recommendations of the committee, I'll make a commitment to have committee meetings. That's where I stand on it. Otherwise, I think we're just repeating ourselves by meeting twice to talk about the same things over and over. Any other questions? All right. Managers report.
All right. Just a few things. So, I'm working with the Alba Mural Society. They've asked us to consider putting a mural this year on the north end of the police department building. Today, I got a list of three artists that they've selected to do the murals around town this year. I'm still trying to figure out how to use Instagram so I can get on there and see some of the past artwork. So, that's, once I get to look at some of their past artwork, we'll narrow down that. And then I think what we talked about is not doing some goofy business down here on PD, do some sort of homage to first responders, to fire department, police, EMS, American flags, American bald eagles, that kind of thing, patriotic kind of stuff down there to honor the first responders in our community. So, if I can find those artists that look like they can do that, then that'll probably be our choice. But we'll bring that decision to the council probably in August. So, I was going to try to narrow down. There's one I know that we don't want, is a bunch of Japanese anime. Not that I'm going to be wrong with Japanese anime. So, we're continuing to work across all, with all the departments. To be honest, we're trying to get ahead of some moans, but all this rain is killing us. I mean, I've got street department guys helping row. I've got, I mean, it's just, guys are doing what the guys got, is doing what they can do to get there if they've done and try to keep it looking nice. But it's just, you know, sometimes it's impossible to get some of these ditches and stuff with standing water. So, they're all working together and working outside of their comfort zone, but everybody's working together. Last thing I want to remind everybody is that the OML annual meeting, sign-ups are open. And so, if you want to go to that annual conference, let me know. I'll put together a list and we'll get everybody registered for the event. So, I don't know what the deadline is, but if you probably give me something by next week, by the next week, we'll get everybody registered. I think the event's like September 21st. So, that's all I've got for now.
And I sent the email out. If you're newly elected, you should have got the information on the newly elected officials' training. So, be sure and don't forget to get that training in.
That's in Woodbridge. One of the next questions is one.
Woodbridge is the next one, yeah. Any questions for Mr. Ford? Okay. I will come back to remarks and inquiries by citizens, but I see we have some people to, I'm making an assumption, possibly participate in our public hearing. And so, I will move to item number nine, public hearing concerning the established seasonal truck route. So, with public hearing, if you've come to talk about that, I'd ask that you just please approach the podium and state your name and we can have that dialogue if you have some things you'd like to say about it.
Have you ever seen these thrown off the works?
Clean up. At least quit cleaning up. To start off, looking at the board, I'm going to guess there's only one of you has ever driven a semi. That's a guess. Maybe Mr. Bowman. I know Mr. Ford has. But anyway, you've made a truck route. Yeah, it's in its infant stages. It's maybe you've got to tweak it a little bit, but all in all, it's not bad. You've got to remember that a semi weighs 80,000 pounds. A car weighs maybe four, five, six. A car can stop really fast. A semi can't. So, when we're coming in, and I'll use Santa Fe, there's several really blind corners. I'm going 10 mile an hour, and if a car is coming the other way going 30, you know, I may not get stopped. So, I may run over the car, might kill somebody, or the car hits me. I'm carrying maybe 300 gallons of diesel fuel. So, if he hits me, we have a spark, we could, you know, we'll take out half a town over there. So, you got to look at it. You don't want, you don't want to be pushing us down Flynn Street. That's Flynn going, coming from the west. Flynn come from the east, yeah, that's a nice wide street. You can see what's coming at you. Coming from the south, that's a little tough because used to, we used to come down Fourth. Now, if you want to take us around, bring us in Flynn, that's still okay. But, you know, I know they've changed some signs over there from yields one way to yields the other, and they changed the stop sign. You know, I really wasn't expecting a stop sign, but it's good for me because I don't have to stop. But, you know, it, you know, we don't really want, we don't want the special treatment. And everybody will say, well, harvest only lasts week, two weeks. On this end of town, there's trucks year-round. You know, if you have a good harvest, Wheeler's and the Co-op, they're moving wheat all winter long, you know? So, it's not just a little spam. You know, it can, it can be a year-round deal. So, anyway, if you got any questions. What changes would you say needed to happen? Do what? What changes in the route would you say would? I mean, the guys coming from the south, yeah, it was nice to come down 281, go over and down Fourth. Fourth's a narrow street. If you've got cars parked on both sides, that's tough, you know, because the car is always going to think, well, I'm in a big hurry, which nine times out of 10 are not, you know? Anybody's in a hurry, it's me because I need to get my wheat dunk and get back to the field. But it's not that big a deal to run on out the little ways, run around, come down Flynn and, you know, kind of keep them, if you can, keep them on the outside of town. Don't be shoving them through town, you know?
So, you're not consulted earlier on?
No, I actually, yes, I was. I mean, like I say, our main route, our, my son and I, we use Santa Fe all the time and we use it year-round. And it kind of tickles this because there's a couple, Seventh Street, it's a dead end in one block, but they're making me yield. That really doesn't make much sense. You go on to Ninth Street, it goes one block, you know, and then they got to turn. Eleventh Street's another one. That one will go two blocks to the north, but that one's the very, very blind, very dangerous corner. So, we get to there, we're expecting a car to come. It's not like whether they do or not. But I will say, I was going through at this harvest and I think I'm going west, you know, and I was looking hard to the north, and here came a little silver car, and I was going to stop, even though she had the yield. I thought, I'm stopping, but she whipped up and she obeyed the street sign, and I thought, well, good for her. So...
Maybe the really blind corner, we could look at having that cross-traffic stop.
That's a really good idea.
At least on that one. The other ones aren't bad, we can kind of see, but that one, if nothing else, if they just stop coming from the north, because that's where I can't see, is to the north. To the south, yeah, once I get close, I can see a block. But the one coming from the north, there's a guy who parks pickups there and whatnot, and he lives there. But yeah, I can't see it at all.
How's the, I had another farmer stop me and visit with me. What's your take on the intersection at Santa Fe and 14th?
Santa Fe and 14th? Eh, I mean, there's a stop sign there, been there forever, so I wouldn't guess change.
Is it too tight?
I don't think, nah, not really. It depends on if there's a car parked on the south side of the street sometimes. But, you know, I can call that guy and say, hey, can you move your car? Once I open a trailer there, and he's good, he'll snap right out there and move it for us. So, it's not bad. But yeah, I wouldn't change the stop sign because I go home that way, my wife will kill me if we put a stop sign there, and she's going to stop.
His concern was that the intersection wasn't wide enough?
Eh...
If you're going west and you're turning to go north, yes, it's difficult because you're turning a truck and trailer.
You've got, yeah.
But I don't know.
I don't know how.
You can widen the intersection.
He can do anything.
I was going to say whether, but, but just manageable for you, yes.
It is, yeah. You could manage only going north. I don't think he goes south. There's a tire right there. I remember, right? Isn't there? On the south side?
Yeah.
Or is it on the north side? I think so.
It's on the south side.
Yeah. So, I mean, that'd be a lot of experience. You know? But I mean, you know, several farmers that come out there from the north and come in that way, we've all got semis, so we never complained about that. We're just happy that Santa Fe is kind of a through the street. But I do like your suggestion, if you would, maybe one stop sign. But that's amazing. We're just big, heavy, and slow, you know? And we can't stop very fast. Okay. That's my, that's my speech.
Light mark, everybody. I will say that the feedback that I've gotten, and I'm guessing that since they didn't come, they didn't want to be publicly known, but I did have feedback regarding Fourth Street making sense coming in from the south, not only from a traffic standpoint and a route standpoint, but from having access to the Co-op for fuel. And so, that's one where I think it's valid, and I mentioned the other feedback I got regarding the 14th.
Well, one other thing, Kelly. On Fourth Street, it's not bad. You're coming down the highway, you want to turn and come down Fourth Street. When you're going back up Fourth Street, but the stoplight there, I mean, we cheat. We go, we cut the corner and go on the north side of the stoplight. But if you've got, if they stop it, and I'm going to pull out there, there's no way I can turn that corner because there's cars sitting right there obeying the stoplight, you know? And then there's two behind them, so they ain't got to zoom. They can back up, I can't turn the corner. But again, with the stoplight, it makes it a little tough. I'm bad going north with this stuff, looks out.
Well, in theory, one day if somebody builds right there, you're not going to be able to use that shortcut.
Exactly. Yeah. That corner gets cut along and said, oh, it's the same.
I did ask somebody on Skyline, asking where Doc goes on Skyline.
I had one that I forgot. I have one on Skyline also. I don't think she disagreed with the route, she just wants the speed enforced. And unless I misinterpreted her, but she often talked to me about the speed of all vehicles on that street.
Have we had a study from our engineers or anything where if we funnel all that, the truck traffic on this particular route, how the route is, how the streets are going to hold up to it?
Let's take a timeout because we can have this discussion when we get to the item where we're going to vote on it. Is there any other public feedback regarding the truck route? Lauren? Well, thank you, gentlemen, for joining us this evening. You're welcome to stick around for the vote. It'll be in a little bit, but it knocks some other stuff out. I'm going to recess the city council meeting and open the Economic Development Authority Please call the roll.
Winters.
Here.
Lauren.
Here.
Dowling.
Here.
Swallow.
Here.
Bear.
Here.
Brooks.
Here.
Bowman.
Here.
All right. And we're going to move to item six, which is, it's a good picture right there. It's an old one, too. Discussion in action to approve the City of Alba Economic Development Authority Resolution 2023-013, resolution of the Alba Economic Development Authority of the City of Alba for the purpose of filing for the Oklahoma Tobacco Settlement Endowment Trust, innovations in built environment funding to rehabilitate the pool, or, excuse me, the bathhouse and associated amenities as part of the Alba Municipal Pool Reconstruction Project and authorize the city business manager and/or mayor to sign all related documents. So, the TSET, Tobacco Settlement Endowment Trust, has announced their, or they opened for applications for this grant. The maximum amount the applicant can apply for is $500,000. The applications are due here in a couple of weeks. And if awarded, they will be announced in November and funded in January. The project has to be bid out and ready to go. And so, with the plans that continue to move forward, we need to have this resolution to be able to go ahead and apply for that half a million dollars to improve the pool. What questions do you have? This did, this did get considered at the pool task force committee, and it also got considered at the Parks and Recreation meeting. Both groups unanimously wanting this, recommending that city council move forward.
This is not imagined.
Did I say it was?
No. I'm just, I'm just saying it's not imagined, it's all straight up.
I'd motion to approve Resolution 2023-013 and authorize the city business manager and/or mayor to sign all related documents.
I have a motion from Mr. Winters, a second from Mr. Bowman, to approve Resolution 2023-013 for the Economic Development Authority for the bathhouse and pool rehabilitation renovations, reconstruction, and authorize the city business manager and/or mayor to sign all related documents as stated in the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Dowling.
Yes.
Bear.
Yes.
Lauren.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
All right. We're going to recess the Economic Development Authority meeting and go to item 16 on the city, return, wait a minute. We're going to return to city council, and then we're going to go to item 16 on city council agenda. It's not normally this complicated. Thank you, ladies. Item 16 is discussion in action to enter into negotiations with the County of Woods to allow Woods County to build a senior citizen center slash community center commencing at the southwest corner of Block 20, original town, city of Alba, Oklahoma, and authorize the city attorney, city business manager, and mayor to prepare necessary documents for city council consideration. Commissioner Smiley's with us this evening if we have any questions on the county's needs with this item. Essentially, I've spoken with all three of the commissioners, they've contacted me individually to talk about the opportunity possibly to have our property that's located adjacent to the old armory. And it'd be at the corner of Choctaw and Second Street. And they would construct a center. We would retain ownership of the property. And then, you know, upon construction, it would be used for the purpose of the senior citizen center, at least initially, but it, you know, depending on how things go in the future, there's no plans for it to be used for anything other than the senior citizen center, though. Is that correct?
That's up to you guys.
And so, but if the senior citizens group ever, you know, did not have a need for it, or if it...
Feels a better one.
Or that it's something else, that building would return to the city. That's the, kind of the gist of the negotiations, how do we structure this to make sure that we can have that kind of a transaction? But it would, you know, basically be, we would take that property that is currently unused and turning it into something that would be useful and probably make that, you know, area of town a little bit more appealing as well. This is only to enter into, you know, further conversations with the commissioners, and then Drew will draw up some documents and we'll get both parties to approve at that point, so...
I'd motion to enter into negotiations with the County of Woods to allow Woods County to build a senior citizen center, community center commencing at the southeast corner of Block, of Block 20, as stated in the agenda, and authorize the city attorney, business manager, and/or mayor to sign all related documents. of Block 20, as stated in the agenda, and authorize the city attorney, business manager, and mayor to prepare the necessary documents for city council consideration.
I second. I have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mrs. Beer to enter negotiations with Woods County for the purposes of building a senior center as stated in item sixteen in the agenda, including authorizing the city attorney, manager, city manager, and mayor to prepare any necessary documents. Is there any further discussion?
The only thing is, the county gifting the old senior citizen center to the city, is that in this part two? I know I read that somewhere in here.
That is something, I don't know, I don't know where you might have read it. That is something the commissioner, one of the commissioners had mentioned to me.
You told me that somewhere in here.
Okay. One of the, that is, I didn't read that part that was in here, but that is something that one of the commissioners had mentioned, mentioned to me, and that could be part of the negotiation. There is, I don't think the commissioners have meant to say that that's on the table or not on the table.
I think that's the only particular thing I would be opposed to in the whole thing. I don't think, I don't wanna see us taking on any more liabilities.
Yeah, we don't have a need for the building. But I, I mean, unless they're, unless someone's come up with a legitimate need.
Yeah, the, the nature of the conversation was that if, if the commissioners would so choose, that would be demolished.
Yeah, we'll take care of that. We'll just give you a slab. We can take that.
I don't think I need one slab.
I don't know what we would do with it, to just be a slab. Just be something we'd have to maintain. That would be...
I, I think...
Is that smart mixed to it?
Yeah, yes, right.
Is part of that building?
The library, yeah.
So it is, I mean, there would be the opportunity for library expansion in the future by owning that lot, so that could be of value.
Yeah.
It's nice.
So, and like I said, none of that has been decided. They've got money. They need to, with related to their CARES Act or COVID dollars, some pandemic funds that they need to use for something and, and so...
This is all being funded by the county for everything?
Yeah.
And it looks like...
The old facilities, the roof is bad. We looked at fixing that. It was gonna cost quite a bit, so we started looking for a place to build a, another, and that's basically where we're at.
It says slash community center, but, I mean, it's just a, it's just a, for use, a for senior citizen center as of right now, and then in the future potentially, or is it also going to be a true community center as well?
It is, no decisions have been made.
Okay.
This is just authorizing us to have those discussions, so...
It may or may not end up like that.
But we'll get to approve the final documents, so...
Yes, all documents will come back before this body, as well as the county commissioners for approval. Any further discussion? Please call the vote. Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Lard?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Swallow? Yes. Well, thank you for joining us this evening. I think you get the award.
Hopefully you did. Thank you guys all that.
I, I will get there. This will be good for the community.
It's definitely been...
You want me to say?
Senior citizen. You're welcome to leave. You've got the furthest travel.
I'm gonna double check that truck route out now. See y'all later.
Thank you. Okay. Now, fifteen airport items. Not really, but we got a few. Are you in a hurry, Paul? Are you, okay. We'll go to item nine.
We did nine.
I mean, ten. No, we haven't yet. Item ten is Discussion and Action to Approve City of Alva Resolution 2023-016, Resolution of the Alva City Council Amending Resolution 2023-012 by revoking it in its entirety and replacing it with the immediate resolution and creating a seasonal wheat harvest grain truck route on the streets of the City of Alva, Oklahoma from May 25th to June 15th annually.
July.
July 15th annually. Thank you. So the, the resolution 2023-16 basically includes, it doesn't, it doesn't address any of the traffic signage. Doesn't address any of the parking, doesn't address any of the traffic signage, and neither did the first resolution, I don't believe. So we, that will be an independent conversation probably to be had between the manager and his staff. But with regard to the route, the amended route includes everything that was in there before, and it includes Fourth Street as well as Barnes from Fourth to Third and Third from Barnes to Flynn.
Also includes Santa Fe to Choctaw on Fourth and Fifth, so you can come out of Real Brothers and turn around that way and get back to Flynn. So there's, it's in that picture if you saw it. There's, so there's two little red squares down there that I added. It also includes the road to get down Mill to, or down College to Mill to get the elevator to be for, for Weavers.
I, I've had people ask why we're not directing people down Ridgeway. Ridgeway's not our road. And so, you know, people can go down Ridgeway. We're not saying they can't go down Ridgeway, but Ridgeway's not our road, and neither is Flynn west of Skyline.
And they can't get up that road. They can't, they can't stop at Flynn and Ridgeway. It's too steep, and they're just starting again.
Another blind corner.
But, potential actions. Approve this newly proposed resolution as is, rescind them all, no truck routes at all. I mean, whatever, I mean...
I'd motion to approve Resolution 2023-016.
I second. I have a motion from Mr. Winters, a second from Mrs. Beer, to approve Resolution 2023-016 as stated as item number ten in the agenda. Is there any further discussion?
I had someone ask me a question on it, who was a little farmer. They said, why, why are we regulating where, where we get struck? Why, if you're gonna make a truck route, why don't you make it apply to everybody on a semi? And I, I don't know much about semis, and I surely don't know much about farming, so I really didn't have a good answer to them. I assume it's because of the volume of the, the trucks that, with the hauling to the grain elevators, but that was a question I, that I was asked. The other big piece is, is we can't regulate anything on 281 or 64. We, we can't do anything to any O dot road. They don't wanna allow us to even put up a sign on an O dot road establishing our wheat harvest route. We occupied that for two months, so that's a lot of the reason you can't do anything on those major highways.
And the majority of other truck traffic in town is going to just stay on those highways.
Yeah.
Or it's, it's not through traffic. It's, you know, delivery to the grocery store, you know, things like that. Any other further discussion?
I'm just curious how, like I was trying to bring up before, if we're, if we're funneling a significant amount of truck traffic over this plateau, you know, in just this specific area, how are they gonna, how, how is that route gonna hold up? I mean, especially if we get, I mean, this year was pretty lousy, but if we get a big, you know, a year with lots of production, what's gonna happen to those, those streets?
Well, I, I think those streets are going to need more, more frequent attention than the others, but I think the condition of our neighborhood streets is, I mean, there are wheat trucks driving, not Mr. Martin, but, you know, a, a lot of our north-south streets, there'd be a wheat truck running down it, depending on, you know, who, who the driver was and, and all of this stuff. And that's, that's hard on streets that weren't, weren't constructed for heavy traffic.
Does this allows us to construct these streets going forward, or does we replace them with...
If we do, yeah.
Yeah. And by taking out the stop signs, there's yield signs here on Santa Fe, and there's not any on Flynn. So what tears these streets up is when those big trucks stop and start, because that's putting a tremendous amount of force down that ground. The fact that they don't have to stop and start anymore on that street will help it from, from deteriorating faster. And same thing on Flynn, there's no stop all the way up here. So just, that's less warranty on the roads from that action of the trucks.
Just going back to budget, I mean, like, we don't only plan the same way as Mill was, you know, maybe with that repairs and stuff like that. So it would be nice if we could see some sort of long-term planning with the budget. And I was gonna ask, are we still kind of on board with putting up crosswalks and signs specifically for park access and what will be...
Yeah, we are.
Because, yeah, especially during the summer, I mean, herds of kids.
Fortunately, this, the harvest issue was late enough, we missed all the baseball game stuff going up there, so there's a lot less traffic up there on, on Fourteenth Street. So we kinda got like, yeah, next year we might have had to certainly put some crosswalks and stuff up there to make sure the kids have a safe place to cross.
Really, the answer, Mr. Brooks, basically, we're not pushing trucks where we don't go before. I mean, no, we're actually taking off Fourth Street.
Except now we're not. We're bringing it back.
Flynn, Santa Fe, that's the way to come in forever. So you're not, you're not overloading that street anymore. You've already had the paths.
Okay. And then, did we come out with any sort of enforcement or anything like that?
We didn't have any issues with it, to be honest with you. I think I, I think I saw, early on, I saw two trucks come down Fourth, and I saw one truck come straight down Flynn. So I actually got, I was having to be out, and I followed him, went down the co-op and made sure they had a copy of the truck route, and the guy's like, oh, okay. He's a candidate, so he didn't speak real clear English, so I had to explain to him where Skyline was. But once I explained to him where Skyline was, he's like, okay. And didn't have any other issues with it. And I think I almost saw four trucks come down Fourth Street, all of harvest.
All right.
In my mind, it worked, and I still think that's a safety hazard going up and down Fourth. That's my personal opinion.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote. Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Lard?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
All right. Okay. Got that done.
Yes, welcome to state.
Thank you.
Bring back food. All right. Took ten off the list, and now, Phil's been waiting for. We'll go to the item number sixteen. No, no, no. Seventeen. Discussion and Action to Apply for the Oklahoma Aeronautics Commission Fuel System Grant to Install 12,000-Gallon Above Ground JDA Fuel Storage and 24-Hour Distribution System for a Total Amount of Approximately $608,385 and to Allow the City Business Manager and/or Mayor to Sign Any Necessary Agreements. We met regarding this twice, actually. First time we didn't have it as an action item on the airport agenda. The second time, in special meeting, we did. The Airport Commission did recommend pursuing this grant opportunity. Our fuel storage at the airport in terms of capacity and age is not likely to meet our needs on into the future. And therefore, we learned with, I don't know, Paul, how much time did we have to turn that grant or turn around the, we've only got a few more days to submit the grant application. Is that correct?
Well, we, what happened is the state in their wisdom, or the way they seen their wisdom, sent it out in a casual email to, like, the airport manager. And he happened to catch it one day and mentioned it in passing, and I heard him, and I said, when you have opportunity, send it to me and let me take a look at it. And then I was snowed under, and so I didn't look at it in appropriate time. And then when I finally opened it, I saw we had four days to actually submit the application. And as far as we know, this is a one-year deal, or they have other programs that seem to go year to year to year. This is a one-time shot as far as we know at this time. And as, as the mayor mentioned earlier, the A C will do the grant up to 50%, up to $300,000 of the cost. They're only asked that a minimum of 5% local share money be used. It has to be local funds, and the system has to be owned and operated by the local sponsor. And so as a result of this, we contacted Toby Baker with the Park Hill, who's our airport engineer, and he, he and his group came up with an estimate that we'll present to the A C for installation of a self-serve jet fuel system and removing the existing fuel tank, which is an underground storage system. The final estimate is on the high side. We did that intentionally. And so with that in mind, and a 10% contingency built into that estimate, along with other possible available grants for the tank removal, and if the ground happens to be hot when we remove the tank, this is a reasonable investment for the airport. And it's also a golden opportunity for the airport to improve a system that's 45 to 50 years old at this time. And keep in mind that we are refueling aircraft, the most expensive of which would be a Gulfstream Five, which would be in excess of $30 to $40 million. So it's imperative that we maintain our equipment to the standards that we can, because that's what they expect when they come into here. The Park Hill estimate is, I think in your literature will show, is $608,385, and that would require a match from the airport of $308,385. And the advantages for applying for this grant and upgrading our JDA, JDA system are as follows. We're gonna upgrade and enhance the revenue stream for the airport, which is vital for us going forward. We're gonna increase our JDA fuel storage capacity. One of our big concerns with the airport manager is that sometimes we get two or three jets landing in out there. He's afraid he's gonna run out of fuel before we get the next truck in here, particularly when they, most of these guys have courtesy and they call ahead. So he knows that Wednesday night, this plane's gonna be in. Friday, this airplane's gonna be in. And so he knows how much, how many gallons are in the tank, how much these dispense, and what they're planning on taking on, and sometimes we can't get a turnaround from our fuel supplier quick enough to refill the tank. It's going to assist in sales of jet fuel after hours by having a self-serve dispenser. It's also gonna reduce the dependence and need for onsite personnel after hours for refueling turbine and jet aircraft. If medical flights are to be based in Alva at some point, they require 24 access to fuel. And I don't know a single person that hasn't been touched by having a relative, a friend, or someone that's needed a medical flight out of here. And it's also gonna eliminate inspections and costs required of an in-ground system, which we currently have. And so this fuel system is just one cog in the system of upgrades over the next few years that's happening out here at your airport. We're upgrading our runway and PAPI lights, and PAPI, in case you're not aware of it, stands for Precision Approach Path Indicator Lights. They're at the end of the runway. They tell the airplane if they're high or low coming in. The jet guys really appreciate that. We're also installing a new automated weather observing system. That went in today. I saw the guys out there working on it. And the, we're also, in the next two years, we'll be rehabilitating the taxiway and taxiway light system out there, and after that, we will complete the ramp expansion that we started two years ago. And when everything is clicking at this airport, we're experiencing months where it averages one jet plane a day landing out there. We also get positive feedback from those planes landing on our service, our facilities, our geographic location. These are all strong points that we have, and that's why they come into here. Also, the last data I saw on medical flights out of Alva, we average about one flight a day, so I can't stress the importance of that. So if you have any additional questions, I'd be happy to answer regarding this topic.
You know, everything Paul said, right on the money, this conversation we've had as a board out there. The, to be clear, the, the, the City of Alva will be applying for this, but the match will be used not from the general fund, but from airport funds, and there is sufficient funds within the airport to do this. And Airport Board recommends it. I recommend that we have a motion to approve.
I'd motion to apply for the Oklahoma Aeronautics Commission Fuel System Grant Program to Install 12,000-Gallon Above Ground JDA Fuel Storage and 24-Hour Distribution System for a Total Amount of Approximately $608,385 and to Allow the City Business Manager and Mayor to Sign Any Necessary Agreements.
I have a motion from Mr. Winters, a second from Mr. Bowman, to apply for the Oklahoma Aeronautics Commission Fuel System Grant Program for the 12,000-Gallon Above Ground JDA Fuel Storage and 24-Hour Distribution System, an amount of $608,385 approximately, and allow the manager and mayor to sign any necessary documents. Any further discussion? Please call the vote. Winters?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Lard?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
All right. I think you can sit, Paul. I'd make it seem the Discussion and Action to amend the previous recommendation by the Alva Regional Airport Commission, the council to submit an FAA grant application for Grant AIP 340-0003-019-2023 to now reflect an FAA grant amount for $382,000. AIP 3400030192023 to now reflect an FAA grant amount for $382,824, with a required city match of $42,536, to partially fund, rehabilitate runway 1836 lights and PAPEs, and authorize the city business manager and/or mayor to sign all necessary documents, accept the grant upon receipt from FAA, and carry out the project. This wasn't anticipated. We already approved this project and the funding source, but when we sent it off to the FAA, they had a different way that they wanted it submitted. It was submitted in two different grants prior, it's still gonna be submitted in two different grants, but the FAA wants more of it in one grant than the other. That's the simplest way I can explain it. It's the same amount of money for the project, we will have an additional grant administration fee by, by the way this works, but that's the only way the FAA is gonna approve it. So, the Airport Board's recommendation was to approve this item, as well as the remainder of these that are related to this item. Paul, anything to add?
No, it's important. If you can't land the planes at night, your head flights can't take off at night.
I have a motion to amend the previous recommendation by Alva Regional Airport Commission, to stay in the agenda and authorize the city business manager and/or mayor to sign all necessary documents, accept the grant upon receipt from FAA, and carry out the project.
Joe?
I'll second.
Okay. I have a motion from Mr. Winters, a second from Mr. Parsons, to amend the previous recommendation and to submit the FAA grant application to now reflect an amount of $382,824, with a city match of $42,536, to partially fund the runway lights and PAPEs, and authorize the manager and the mayor to sign all necessary documents, accept the grant upon receipt from the FAA, and carry out the project. Again, that city match will be airport funds, so, is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Lard?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
The next item is along the same lines. Discussion and action on recommendation to submit FAA grant application for Grant AIP 3400030182023 for an FAA grant in amount of $140,940, with a required city match of $15,660, to partially fund, rehabilitate runway 1836 lights and PAPEs, and authorize the city business manager and/or mayor to sign all necessary documents, accept the grant from the FAA, and carry out the project.
So moved.
I have a motion from Mr. Winters, is there a second?
Second.
Motion from Mr. Winters, second from Mr. Parsons, to submit an FAA grant application for the AIP 3400030182023 for the grant in the amount of $140,940, with a city match of $15,660 for the runway lights and PAPEs, and authorize the manager and the mayor, or the mayor, and/or the mayor, to sign all necessary documents, accept the grant from the FAA, and carry out the project. Is there any further discussion?
Do we have a timeframe that that project will be completed in?
Yeah.
It's, we're being held at my parts. We give an air twenty-day lead time, which we are very upset about, because right now we have long days, we're able to get aircraft in Austin later in the day. This puts us into early fall, and they're gonna start work till September, October, where our days are shorter. We're what, down sixty days for runway work? That puts us into December, and this is affecting us drastically.
And we intentionally approved, prior to using our own cash in advance, before even getting the FAA, the FAA be available, just to expedite it, and it's, it's not been, it's out of our hands.
At this part, we've done everything we're supposed to do, we're waiting on parts. As soon as they have them, I mean, you guys have done everything you've got, our engineers have done everything he's done, short of writing a US senator somewhere to get the parts here faster, I don't know what else to do.
Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Lard?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Alright, item twenty, is discussion in action on Amendment Number Six to the owner-engineering agreement between the city, between the city and Park Hill, city of Alva, Park Hill, for grant administration services related to FAA Grant AIP 3400030192023, and allow the city business manager and the mayor to sign the agreement.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Winters, and a second from Mrs. Beer, to approve the agenda item number twenty, as written. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Lard?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Lard?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Lard?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Lard?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Lard?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Lard?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Item twelve, is discussion in action to approve Economic Development Incentive Grant for Summit Properties to repair the fascia on their building in the amount of $5,000. The EDI grant is something that was established by council, gosh, several years ago. The whole intent of that program was to incentivize local businesses to invest in their own properties, to make them more appealing for customers and others that would come to our community, that they would attract more business and have a better impact on the local economy. So, we do have two of these, the first one is with Summit, and the committee did vote by email to recommend, with two members voting and one not, my recommendation would be that we approve this grant. It is a matching grant, I think their actual project is $12,000 to $14,000, and our max sum of match is $5,000, that's what this is.
And these are the only two applications that we've received?
Well, no.
This year.
We've done others before.
Yeah, this is the only ones we've received.
These are the currently the only two we have.
Do we have the cap that we put on how many we will fund a year?
When we can't afford it, we don't fund it.
Okay.
I have a motion to approve the Economic Development Incentive Grant for Summit Properties to repair the fascia on their building in the amount of $5,000.
The EDI grant is something that was established by council, gosh, several years ago. The whole intent of that program was to incentivize local businesses to invest in their own properties, to make them more appealing for customers and others that would come to our community, that they would attract more business and have a better impact on the local economy. So, we do have two of these, the first one is with Summit, and the committee did vote by email to recommend, with two members voting and one not, my recommendation would be that we approve this grant. It is a matching grant, I think their actual project is $12,000 to $14,000, and our max sum of match is $5,000, that's what this is.
And these are the only two applications that we've received?
Well, no.
This year.
We've done others before.
Yeah, this is the only ones we've received.
These are the currently the only two we have.
Do we have the cap that we put on how many we will fund a year?
When we can't afford it, we don't fund it.
Okay.
I have a motion to approve the Economic Development Incentive Grant for Summit Properties to repair the fascia on their building in the amount of $5,000.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Winters, a second from Mrs. Beer, to approve the EDI grant for Summit Properties to repair the fascia on their building in the amount of $5,000. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Brooks?
No.
Dowling?
No.
Lard?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
One more? Or did I miss one?
Bowman.
Oh, Bowman, I'm sorry.
Alright, item thirteen, same thing, EDI grant, discussion in action to approve EDI grant for value-added products to repair the entry doors for G&amp;G Home Furnishings in the amount of $5,000.
I'll make a motion to approve the EDI grant for value-added products to repair the entry doors for G&amp;G Home Furnishings in the amount of $5,000.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Bowman, a second from Mrs. Beer, to approve the EDI grant for FAB to repair the doors for G&amp;G Home Furnishings in the amount of $5,000. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Lard?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Brooks?
No.
Dowling?
No.
Alright, item fourteen, is discussion in action to authorize the city business manager and the mayor to sign the engagement letter with HSPG and Associates to allow them to conduct the city's FY 2022-2023 annual audit. You'll remember, we went into an agreement with HSPG last year, their first year to do our audit. This engagement letter authorizes them to get to work on our this year audit. Same crisis last year, nothing's changed.
I have a motion to authorize the city business manager and the mayor to sign the engagement letter with HSPG and Associates to allow them to conduct the city's FY 2022-2023 annual audit.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Winters, and a second from Mrs. Beer, to authorize the city manager and the mayor to sign the engagement letter with HSPG and Associates and allow them to, allow them to conduct the FY 2022-23 annual audit. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Lard?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Item fifteen, is discussion in action to enter into agreement with County Woods County for E911 dispatching and administrative call services for one year from July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2024, for a sum total of $30,000 to be paid in monthly installments of $2,500, and to allow the city business manager and/or mayor to sign all necessary documents. This is routine business, the $30,000 exceeds the manager's spending limit. We do use the county for dispatch with all of our emergency services, and that's what this agreement allows us to continue.
I have a motion to enter into agreement with County Woods County for E9111 dispatching and administrative call services, as stated in the agenda, and to allow the city business manager and/or mayor to sign all necessary documents.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Winters, a second from Mrs. Beer, to enter into agreement with Woods County for E911 dispatching and administrative call services for the year July 1, 23 to June 30, 24, for a total of $30,000, paid in monthly installments of $2,500, and to allow the manager and the mayor to sign all necessary documents. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Lard?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Okay. Twenty-one. Discussion and action to approve and authorize the city business manager to sign the memorandum of understanding between the City of Alva Tourism Committee and the Alva Chamber of Commerce with an annual cost of $44,305 to be billed quarterly at a cost of $11,076.25. These will be tourism funds, the Tourism Committee, Sadie, you didn't mention them, but you guys authorized, you made those recommendations at your last meeting, correct? So, basically, the chamber, or the Tourism Committee has contracted with the chamber to provide marketing and public relations services, so the website, periodicals, social media, all that stuff, but in addition, they also provide the administrative staff for their meetings.
Part-time?
And a part-time position to help with the tourism.
Social media graphics.
Tourism Committee's recommending approval.
I have a motion to approve and authorize the city business manager to sign the memorandum of understanding between the City of Alva Tourism Committee and the Alva Chamber of Commerce with an annual cost of $44,305 to build quarterly at a cost of $11,076.25.
Second.
I gotta say, alright. I have a motion from Mr. Winters, a second from Mrs. Beer, to approve and authorize the city business manager to sign the memorandum of understanding between the Tourism Committee and the Chamber of Commerce, and a cost of $44,305, billed quarterly at $11,076.25. Is there any further discussion?
And the memorandum of understanding, talks about the staffing of it, it states that they're open Monday through Friday nights, for, I know there's been times I've sent people there and they've been closed, and it seems like, and I've drove by several times and seen during those hours they're closed, is there, who do they, on something like that, who do they report to if we're funding them to be open and it's not being open during all the times, I mean, how?
Usually when they're closed, it's because they're at another event, like the other day, they all had to come down here for the Hope Pregnancy event, so they have to close the door, they're usually pretty good about putting a sign, Jody always answers herself, but she does have to report to a board.
Okay.
And they do, you know, they hire her or whoever, so, but she does have a board to report to.
In terms of using tourism dollars and who's accountable, if they all do a good job, Tourism Committee will quit using them.
Okay.
Yeah.
But, they, they've performed satisfactorily in the eyes of the Tourism Committee. And I, I think I see quite a few social media posts. It'd be, basically, it'd be just like any other contractor, as long as the contractor performs to satisfactory level, I mean, that's all the contractor can do, and if the Tourism Committee ever thought they could get a better price or a better product, they'd have that option. The MOU is renewed annually. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Brooks?
Today.
Dowling?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Lard?
Yes.
All right, item twenty-two, action, or discussion in action to enter into executive session pursuant to 2021 OS 307B1 to discuss FY 23, '24 City of Alva and IFF Local 3782 contract.
Motion to enter into executive session.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Winters, a second by Mr. Bowman, to enter into executive session. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Lard?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Item, okay, we're gonna return to regular session. Item twenty-three is, is action on the FY 2023, '24 City of Alva and IFF Local 3782 contract.
Motion to approve the contract as presented.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Winters, a second from Mrs. Bear, to approve the city and firefighter union contract for 2023, '24. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Lard?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
I'll stick around with autograph stuff in a little bit.
All right.
Item twenty-five, remarks and inquiries by, or, excuse me, twenty-four, new business, we don't have anything, to my knowledge, that qualifies as new business. Item twenty-five is remarks and inquiries by council members.
I have, well, it's a question. Where are we at for the Locust Street? It is, people are speeding down the road, I don't know if we can put some speed bumps down, there's large rocks getting briccheted, and it is, I mean, the dust and stuff, and I know the rain, we smoothed it out, I know that, but where are we at, or is that, and can we put some, like, temporary speed bumps down to keep, there's kids that play on that street, and with cars speeding down it for whatever reason, it's just a hazard, especially having rock and it's not pavement.
I would assume we can. I haven't, they asked a question, and I saw, I've asked the street department. As far as where we are, Myers is sending, I think they were sending up last week, they had to send up another engineer, there, there was something weird they didn't like about their plans, so before they sent it to DEQ, they went to get another engineer up here to make sure we had it correct to get the DEQ permit, and once we get that, then we'll be going out for bids.
Okay. The waterline replacement supersedes the street repair.
Yes.
Right. I've had a lot of people using the Facebook complaint deal, I would send it out to anyone who finds it, and it's been working well, so I appreciate that.
It does work well, we get it, and we get electronic, we track to, to completion, so I appreciate it. It helps me on my weekly meetings to, to make sure the tasks are being assigned, that people are following up on, so it's a good thing that people use that.
Thank you.
Anything else? Item twenty-six is to adjourn. Okay. We'll call it ordered, the regular meeting of the Alva Utility Authority. Please call the roll.
Winters?
Here.
Lard?
Here.
Dowling?
Here.
Swallow?
Here.
Bear?
Here.
Brooks?
Here.
Parsons?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Item three is discussion in action on the consent agenda.
All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AUA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda in place for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the special meeting, June 15th, 2023, and item B, approval of claims in the amount of $251,748.91, and payroll expenses of $50,611.44.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Winters, a second from Mrs. Bear, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.